Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January 17th, 2024 Oyster River Cooperative School District Regular School Board Meeting. I'd like to start the meeting with the approval of the agenda of a motion. Tom?
I would approve the agenda.
Can I have a second? Gianna? All in favor? And we have seven in favor. Any public comments this evening? It does not appear that we have any members of the public here. Okay. Approval of the minutes. We have both the regular January 3rd minutes as well as two non-public meeting minutes. Shall we do the regular minutes first? Can I have a motion, please? Tom?
I would approve the sorry, the game right there.
Can I have a second? Gianna? Any corrections?
Yes, yes. At the end, it sort of shows one non-public session, but it's written twice. It's actually two separate non-public sessions. And there was a motion at the end of the meeting to seal the minutes of the second non-public session. I've already explained to Karen and sent her the changes.
Any other changes? All right. With that correction, all in favor? Seven in favor. And can I have a motion to approve the non-public meeting minute? Yes. Heather? And a second? Gianna? Any corrections? No? All in favor? Seven in favor. Announcements, accommodations, and comments from the district? None? Oh, yes. Rebecca?
Good evening. Rebecca Noe, Oyster River High School. Well, first, I would like to say this is hot off the press. I was just writing down some dates from an email I just received from Maria Rosie. But today, we got our Gold Key, Silver Key, and Honorable Mentions from the Scholastic Art Awards. And so I would like to read those names of those students. For our Gold Keys, we have Claire Carstens, Maruna Dispenisku, Finn Henderson, Autumn Hoffman, Ava Melanson, Elliot Orchard Bluen, Ella Robertge, Drew Sharp, and Lily Smith. For Silver Key, we have Elise Bacon, Claire Carstens, Axel Freund, Rose Goldsmith, Kayden Pear, and Lydia Shemchick. And then for Honorable Mention, we have Mia Welglars, Connor Wilson, and Lilia Zetner. So that is a huge achievement for those students. And what I just got was the information that their artwork will be shown at Pinkerton Academy. It's actually on its way there now. And the ceremony is on February 11th. And then in March, all the artwork will be displayed in the Durham Public Library, and that will happen on March 6th. And I'll have more details about that later on also. But I'm just very proud of our artists. They work really, really hard for this competition, and it shows. So congratulations to all of them. Our last day of midterms is next Monday. So Tuesday is no school. It's Voting Day, and so that's teachers getting ready for the new semester. Wednesday, the 24th, starts our Quarter Three, our Semester Two. Thursday, the 25th, is Coffee House. And so that will be the second edition of our Mouth of the River. Thursday, February 1st, we have our Internet and Digital Safety. This one is for adults only, but we'll have something for students later on. And then on February 8th, we have our 8th Grade Information Night. So I want to make sure that all 8th grade parents are aware of that. And I know that Mr. Sullivan has been putting that in his weekly newsletter for 8th grade parents also. Any questions for me?
Just the date of the Coffee House again?
This coming Thursday, the 26th. Oh, excuse me, the 25th is Thursday, 25th. Thank you.
Other district? Nothing else? Okay. Board announcements? Yes, Heather?
So this weekend was the middle school's performance of Oliver. They did six shows, three on Friday, two in school. So half the middle school saw the morning session, and half the middle school saw the afternoon session. And then they had four public sessions, Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday. They all did a fantastic job. It was excellent. A huge thank you to everyone who helped volunteer and the directors and choreographers, so Sarah Kuhn, Julianne Woodbury, and Erin Handwerk. And it was really great.
Other district? I mean, board, excuse me, board announcements? Okay. I will echo that I did see the middle school play, and it was, they did a fantastic job. District reports.
Good evening. Just want to remind everyone about the ICAC presentation, which I believe Becca was referring to, which is the Internet Crimes Against Children presentation. That is on February 1st. It's at 6:00 PM, and it's here at the middle school in the music hall. So we hope to have a lot of people coming. We've put it out to surrounding communities. The New Hampshire DUE has also sent it out through a listserv as well. So we hope to have a lot of people attending. We are currently planning for summer programming, so Reach will be happening this year. We have a flyer that's going to be sent out soon. That's a program that's in collaboration with Durham Parks and Rec. Reach and ESY, or Extended School Year, will be happening from the 12th of July, starting that Monday, on the 12th of July, and then going the week of August, the first weekend to August, which is August 2nd. The morning portion from 8:30 to 11:30 is the Reach portion, and then the afternoon from 12 to 5 is the Durham Parks and Rec portion. So we're really excited to be offering programs again, and I hope that people keep their eyes open as more information will be sent out. And then also, I just want to remind everybody that Tuesday is the primary day, so the schools are closed. We have a teacher workshop day. The high school and Mast Way will both be sites for elections. So the faculty at the high school and the faculty at Mast Way have the option of going to the middle school in mo haremit if they want to avoid some of that to be able to do their work. We will have some connect suicide prevention training happening on that day for staff and faculty who are not able to attend at the beginning of the school year, for whatever reason, whether they were hired at a later date or just weren't able to attend. And I also will be working with the counseling staff, K through 12, on some vertical alignment and curriculum work. Do you all have any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing I would like to do is make a nomination of Bill Sullivan as the principal of the middle school. As many of you know, Bill has been in an interim status since July 1st. When I announced the staff, I was making this nomination today, he got a standing ovation. So the staff is very, very excited about him becoming the principal instead of the interim principal. It falls on Bill to make the next move related to his assistant principal, and I'm pretty confident I know what that move will be. But tonight, I'd like to nominate Bill as the official principal of Oyster River Middle School.
All right. Can I have a motion? Brian?
Motion to make Bill Sullivan the principal of Oyster River Middle School.
Can I have a second? Matt? All right. All in favor? Seven in favor? That is wonderful. Very happy. Congratulations.
And to share with you, he would normally be here, but as he said to his faculty today, it's taken him 47 years to get Celtics tickets. So he's at the Celtics game tonight. You know, one hand giveth, the next hand taketh away. We have received our Human Resources Director's resignation. She's given me six weeks' notice. You may have noticed that I advertised before this meeting. I actually am incredibly impressed. It's been open for a week, and we have had at least eight applications. And, you know, Amy and I did a quick review of them today, and a good five of them are really excellent applications. The Facilities Director position closes Friday. Again, Amy and I went through those positions today, and we have some real credible applications there as well. So we'll be moving on those applications next week and the week after. I've let my successor superintendent, Robert, know of these, and he's welcome to participate if he has the time. I know that he's interested in participating in the director's interviews, but he didn't know, does not know, unless he's paying attention to this meeting, hi, Robert, if you are, that the HR position is now open. So Amy and I plan on moving on those two positions. The reason I say Amy is she's the direct supervisor of both of those. And we've invited several other employees who would interact with those positions. Suzanne will be involved in the HR position because it's an SAU position. The Facilities Director actually works outside of our office, so it really does just come under Amy at that point. But we'll invite some of our employees to work with us in the selection process. So I'm pretty excited by what I saw today, and I think, again, we'll be leaving the district in a much better place for Robert when he comes in. So then I wanted to just move on to April 8th. April 8th is a big deal for the state of New Hampshire. It's going to be a solar eclipse. Solar eclipses are much rarer than lunar eclipse, and the state is considering, under legislation, HB 1471, to make that an official school day off so that students can participate in this event. The state is promoting all kinds of materials, educational materials, and it seems to have bipartisan support, so it looks like one of those things where really the Democrats and Republicans are on the same page. If that happens, then I'll be coming back to you and asking for that day to be a solar eclipse day for our students. And we will build up to that as a district at the elementary, middle school, and high school level so that students can truly participate in the day. Suzanne is already looking at eye protection stuff for our kids, and so we're gearing up assuming that HB 1471 is going to pass. And I think it's a really exciting opportunity for our children to experience something that rarely happens. And so that's where we are.
Just one simple thing. It is April 8th of 2024, not 2023. Otherwise, it'd be a year too late.
You're absolutely right. Then, carrying on my report, we did have a meeting with the Subcommittee, the Barrington School Board. Matt was there, and Tom was there, and we talked about a couple of issues. One is that we wanted to create a cap, if you will, in terms of what Barrington would pay the district for tuition. And that cap really is language that Amy shared with me that everybody bought into, which is using the DOE 25 to make sure that Barrington doesn't pay any more than what Oyster River would pay. And so that's a pretty simple change. Barrington asked that if they could increase the current cap of students. It's currently at 200. We've never reached 200. We've hovered around 180 as kind of a zenith at this point. But it actually feeds into our current enrollment moving through the middle school and then ultimately in the high school. So as a concept, we talked about the idea of maintaining it at 200 students until 2028-29, and that in 2025 to 2028-29, 55 of those students could be freshmen. And then as we get into '28-29 and go through '34, '35, we increase that ceiling by 10 students each year. Now, please understand, this is not an agreement. This is a conversation that we had that ultimately the new superintendent, this school board, and that school board would have to actually sign off on. So these are just concepts to this point. And then Barrington asked that, in addition, that no school system would get a better rate or charge less than what we charge Barrington. The fact is, that's what I do now. If Nottingham, for example, came in and said, "We'd like to send three kids to you," I charge the Barrington rate. If a family comes in from Northwood and just has one child, and it's not being sponsored by the school system, what I've charged is whatever the tuition rate is for that school year, which is a couple thousand dollars higher. So it's really current practice. It's not a change in practice, and it makes sense to incorporate it into the agreement. So again, these aren't binding thoughts. You know, next year, when the two boards sit down and this is pulled out, you can refine this any way you want, but these are the concepts that we put aside. I have a file in my office for the new superintendent so that he can just pull this out, but Matt will be there even if Tom and I aren't. So he can be your continued representation on that committee, and you just have to choose someone to support him. And I really think that it should be an easy, breezy conversation done in truly one minute. It doesn't take legal representation to make these changes. When Tom and I first did it, we had Gordon, and they had Dean, and we went for days working out legalese. This is a pretty straightforward change. So that's where this is. And again, nothing binding tonight, just to give you where we ended up. Matt and Tom, did you want to add anything?
No, I just think that maybe a thought, because I won't be here when it's, you know, determined, but you might want to think about maybe not guaranteeing 280, but guaranteeing 250, and then having the option to negotiate beyond 250 each of the following years. Because then, so far out, that's 100 more than we have now. It would preserve our right to maintain it at 250 if that's workable for us. If you guarantee 280, I think then you have to have mutual agreement not to have 280, and that might make... So just a thought.
Good thought, Tom. Thank you. Matt, did you have anything?
No.
All right. So moving on then, UNH survey. The Survey Center has been so awesome with us. This, as you can read every single day, they're doing the political check on the presidential race, and so to get us in was really a gift. We finalized the survey last week, and I'm just waiting for them to deliver it. Once they deliver it, then Jen Brown will take charge of distribution. And when somebody fills it out, and Gianna, or his apparent, fills it out, when she sends it, it doesn't come back to Jen, it goes to UNH. So you'll get a lot of questions about, is this anonymous? It's absolutely anonymous. And so I'm looking forward to being able to get that and put it out. It'll be out for about three weeks. And then they will collate the results. They'll meet with Suzanne and I, and then they'll do a public presentation here in the second meeting of February. So that's where we are on that. And I want to thank Gianna and Tom and Dan for their contributions to the work of forming the survey, and minor adjustments made by the Survey Center, nothing substantive. And so I think we're in a really good place for accomplishing that goal. And I believe that is the end of my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening. In your packet was the final warrant articles for the 2024 year. You had your public hearing last week, and there were no changes. So these are the exact same warrant articles you had before.
So can I go ahead and have a motion to approve and sign the warrant article as presented from the public hearing? Heather? A second? Gianna? All in favor? Seven in favor? Okay? That is approved.
Also, in your packet, you had received copies, draft copies, of the MS 26, which is the proposed budget, and the MSDSB. Those were draft. I was out sick last week, so Wendy had printed those off of the Department of Revenue website, and they were not completed yet. The copies that Denise has in her hands have the swept money and have the prior-year actual revenues and expenditures. So the ones that you have in yours are just, they were incomplete.
Okay. And I believe you need a motion, so a motion to adopt the fiscal year 25 budget and sign the MS 26 for the deliberative session. Brian? Can I have a second? Tom? All in favor? Seven in favor? And I do have, so there's a lot of signatures. So I'm going to pass this around, and everyone, there's no particular order. It does ask for a position, so just board member under the position, unless you're Vice Chair or so on. We'll get that going around.
Yes, so you'll sign your name six times. Do you want me to stay up for the Finance Committee, or do you come back up?
Just Ms. Stephen Rapoport.
Right. Oh, yeah. So Maeve is not able to be with us tonight. Yeah, you can start it if you want. I didn't sign it yet, but that's all right. Maeve is not able to be with us tonight as she has a basketball game. So yes, let's move right on to our Finance Committee report.
We met, I believe it was last week? Last Monday, yeah. Discussed actually two things. One was the Facilities Fees Agreement, which I see is on the agenda for later. Another thing we did at the very end was I proposed a scoring system for our CIP program. And basically, what that is, is it's a work in progress. It'll still come to the board after the Finance Committee kind of fine-tunes it. But basically, what it is, is you put a score to each item on the CIP list. So what happens if two items on the list kind of come up at the same time? The score is going to be able to tell you which one's more important, which one's a priority. Because I know right now, our system is really whatever fits in the budget that year, unless it's an absolute emergency. That's kind of where we squeeze it in, especially at the end of the year. So we're trying to get an idea of, you know, what's important as far as, I mean, it's a scoring system that is. Is it important for safety? Is it important for funding, for state funding? Is it important for, you know, is it something I just can't wait another year because it's, you know, it's just a building issue or something like that? But one thing that Jim wanted to put on there, which was actually a very good idea, is how many years has it been on the CIP and not been dealt with? Because we have a lot of things that we've kicked the can down the road on that really need to be done, and the only thing we're doing is costing ourselves more money by kicking that down the road. So we're going to put that in there in the score. That score does not determine necessarily where it falls in the CIP. It just gives you an idea, when things are competing against each other, which one's more important.
So, oh, I'm sorry. I still have my mic on. Who would determine the score? Like, is it the board that would decide the score? Or the Facilities Director?
No. The Finance Committee would have, you know, with the Business Administrator and the Superintendent, because they're also there in the meeting. We'll go through that, and actually, we would score them all together. Do it all together. All right, that's a three. That's a one. You know, that's a zero or something like that. It's, I believe it was zero to three or zero to four. And I'll share it with the board once we fine-tune it, but it's just something that everybody agrees upon, and every year, you have to, you should rescore everything on the CIP. So, because as you can see, if you actually look at the CIP, you know, it gets smaller each coming year, and then everything kind of ripples down to the end, and that's the can that gets kicked down the road, and that stuff just never gets done. So we're going to find a way to get it higher up in the list and just get it prioritized in a way, you know? Just kind of put a system to it, because right now, we really don't have a system. What's, not that the system we have, what we use now is working, but I just don't think it's as efficient as it could be. So that was the whole idea behind that. Did you want to talk about facilities now, or did you want to wait until, I mean, it's basically next on the list?
Yeah, that's actually, we don't have anything under unanimous consent, so that is actually the next item on the agenda. So you might as well just jump right into facility fees.
So first, I want to thank Amy for putting together a huge database of everything and anything within probably 100 miles or here of what people were charging for any type of facility, whether it be an indoor facility or an outdoor facility, and for what types of group and how they grouped. I mean, it was literally a lot of information. It was everything you guys had asked for in the last meeting, which she really put together fast, so we were able to kind of process it. And we did two things when we looked at it. When we looked at it, we looked at, not only are we competitive with our pricing, but, you know, we did some, or Jim did some rough math and shared with us that what are we losing by not charging certain groups? And what we came to with a number was we actually, within the last year or two, we've lost about $100,000 of potential income to the district for use of these fields. And what happens is those fields are actually being used probably a little more than we expected, and what is happening is they're going to have to be replaced quicker than we plan. So that $100,000 really is about $200,000 if you think about the wear and tear that's put on it and the money we lost. So it's going to cost us probably about $800,000 to replace just the carpet on a field turf field, and we have two of them now. So good thing is they're built far enough apart that we can save for one and then start saving for the next, and they're not going to come right one after the other. So that was the biggest discussion, was really the field turf fields. But we also looked at, you know, using the gym. Obviously, we had to redo a little bit of the middle school because we had a multipurpose room fee in the middle school. We don't have a multipurpose room anymore. We have here, and we have the Learning Commons and the gym. So we had to do a little updating there. What we were trying to do was, we don't want to be the most expensive. We also don't want to be the cheapest, and we were competitive. We also wanted to have some minimums on certain ones. And I believe, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, we had some three-hour minimums in some of them, didn't we?
Yep.
Yeah, the turf field, I believe, had a three-hour minimum. With the auditorium. And the reason being is some of these, some of these facilities need a lot of work to either set them up or take them down, or we have to bring in a custodian to come in. And that, we had to make sure that we were at least covering our costs for that. What we had before, we weren't covering our costs. We were actually losing money to bring a custodian in. So we were, that's why we decided on $40 per hour, the minimum charge of three hours, because when we call a custodian in, their minimum pay is three hours. We also looked at fees for other, like the audiovisual stuff, those kind of fell right in line. And most of the fees, we really didn't change much. The only thing we did take out was nonprofits within the district. We still have a nonprofit lane or column for nonprofits, but we looked at the usage of the nonprofits of our facilities, and in some instances, they were more than what we were using them for. So our nonprofits were actually utilizing our, not only our fields, but our, actually mostly fields, but our gyms too, at an astronomical rate, and that's where the $100,000 comes in. So basically, what we decided was, trying to be fair, we have a rate for for-profit outside groups, and we have a new rate for nonprofit outside groups. All nonprofits now are treated the same. That way, we don't have this, are they this type of nonprofit or that type of nonprofit? A nonprofit is a nonprofit. A for-profit is a for-profit. Obviously, prioritizing these, school's always first. School needs always come first. So if it's a school board meeting, or if it's a, you know, some type of meeting that we have to have here, or a sporting event for the kids, or a meeting for the kids, that comes first. But as far as making it more fair and trying to recoup some of the wear and tear that we're getting, we decided to go with a true, just nonprofit rate up and down the board because it's just too confusing. And we realized how confusing it was. We tried to compare it to other schools, because no other schools had all the different variations in it that we had. So we simplified it, made it fair, and to the point where, like I said, not the most expensive, not the cheapest, right in the middle, but I think it's a fair price. expensive, not the cheapest, right in the middle, but I think it's a fair price for what they get from us. So, did I forget anything? Jim or Amy?
No, we did, we did remove some items in particular that we used to have on the, that's on the original is a kitchen. We did remove that.
No, we did.
So it used to be that people could request to use our kitchens. We've completely removed that. No group, outside group can use our kitchen.
Can I just back you up on that, Amy? That is because federal law does not allow outside users to utilize our kitchens because of the federal food that's there.
So that was another one of the big changes that we made. And again, we also put on here, like, for example, if somebody doesn't need a custodian, they're not going, so we had to put a little caveat, like, it says that all groups will be charged for staffing and other fees as applicable. So if you don't need audiovisual, if you're using, say, this room, but you don't need the screen, then we're not going to charge you for it. If you don't need custodian because you're not going to be, you know, having any necessarily food or anything to be cleaned up, then we could waive that as well. It all is going to be on an instant, you know, case-by-case basis, but it's at least on here so people know if you do require, you know, it's required that this is your charge.
I have a couple of questions. So, the first is, so what's the rationale for charging weekend rates different than weekday rates?
For the staffing? We pay overtime on those. So if somebody's coming in on a Saturday, we have to pay time and a half to custodial fee?
Custodians are here all the way into the night during the week. But on the weekend, they have to be called in and overtime the minute they walk in the door.
The second question, so I'm still trying to wrap my head around the nonprofits within the district. So does that mean we're going to charge the PTO when they have a PTO meeting? Because they're a nonprofit.
They are a school function nonprofit. They're not independent. They're independent and dependent concurrently. So we saw them as a different category because their existence is to support the schools.
I think it might be a good idea to clarify those exceptions. And that's the one that jumps to my mind. There may well be others because they are technically, you know, their own kind of nonprofit. So I do think that, that it should be noted, you know, however you want to word it, but for any groups such as the PTO and others that we consider to be actually part of our district, even though they have their own, you know, they're under their own nonprofit status, I think, so. Other, other people have questions? Yes, Dan?
Yeah, so you make a good point, Denise. I think, so Boosters is another example of an organization that would come to mind. Some of them are nonprofits, some of them are just affiliated with the school district. I think if we, if we define those groups by their mission being to support some element of the school district's mission, then I think, whereas other nonprofits tend to have independent missions, right? So I think that's probably the way to tackle it. I just wanted to, I think this is great work. Generally in agreement with everything I've heard so far. Just want to address something that's been a very reasonable confusion in the general public in the past when we've had this kind of discussion. The point of this discussion is not to profit from organizations and activities that, you know, many of us here around the table and our kids have depended on for years and years. It is simply to recoup costs that are otherwise incurred by the district to support those programs. In no way is this a means of profiting from outside organizations. So that is something that's, you know, been a reasonable conclusion when we haven't made the case clearly enough in the past. People think, well, why am I suddenly, you know, why is the organization I depend on for, you know, music or sports or arts now telling me that the school district is charging them? It's simply a matter of, we really aren't in a position to spend money as a school district on programs that the school district doesn't directly support or endorse. But we think it's important that the district facilities continue to support the general community. And that's one of the, that's one of the obligations I think we've made to the community and in turn for their support in things like bonds to, you know, redo our fields, is that when we're not using it, we want it to support the community. So hopefully, I've done that in a clear enough way, but I think we'll have to continue to make that point. Because I think people are going to be reasonably concerned if we do end up changing this dynamic. And we're going to have to stay out in front of that conversation by making the point that we are not just charging you to charge you, there is a real justifiable reason for doing it.
So along those lines, Dan, I think that's great. We probably should create a preamble that captures those thoughts.
One thing I think I'd like us to consider with the turf fields and looking at, I mean, I haven't done an exact careful comparison to the others. There's often a day cap, you know, that if you use it for a full day, it isn't at the 120 per hour rate. So, now, like for the auditorium, if you have extra hours, it's at a short or smaller rate. I'm wondering whether we would want to consider that for the athletic fields, so it's like something like 360 for the first three hours, but then not every additional hour at 120 because that would add up to like $1,000 for a tournament for a full day. And that's really more than I saw any other field, you know, in terms of comparisons. So I'd just like to point, just offer that as a possible, you know, whether the extra hours could be at a smaller rate than the 120.
I'm just wondering if there was any discussion about the different sizes of the spots? For instance, in the gymnasium, if there's a basketball game, you're charging the same amount for the middle school that can seat 230 people versus the high school that can seat 600 people. Is there a thought to scale that in some way?
The actual floor itself is identical, Matt. So it's the wear and tear on the floor that you're charging for.
Okay. Perfect.
And another thing we discussed too was, we've made, I think, an error in the past when we try to utilize the field turf field, the track and field turf field at the same time. What I mean by that is having a track event and maybe having a field hockey or soccer or something going on at the same time. Great in theory, but terrible in execution because what ends up happening is balls go into the track, you know, people are crossing each other, it's just, it doesn't work. So when you rent the track or you rent the field, you're renting the entire track and field. You're not just getting certain parts of it. And that was kind of why we did the hourly thing the way we did. It was kind of to, you know, when you get, when you get it, you get the whole thing. You don't get just half the field or the one end with the track and field stuff on it. You get it all. That was a logistical thing that was brought up that actually made sense because there's real-life experience and anecdotal evidence to how difficult that can be. So, thanks to Heather.
Any other comments? All right. Thank you very much for all your work and thank you, Amy, as well for all the work you did in putting together the comparisons, so.
And thank you to the Board for the questions and comments because we'll take it back to finance and start incorporating some of the questions and concerns the Board has raised tonight.
All right, thank you. Let's see, oh, school board self-evaluation. So every year, we, you know, we need to do self-evaluation, it is in our policies. And we have some sample, I know some, some sort of sample evaluation forms that were included in backup. I think honestly, the way we did it last year, which was essentially to go around and each person kind of state, you know, what they thought went well in terms of our goals, you know, what improvements we needed to make, seemed to work really well. But I'm obviously open to suggestions if people have anything else that they want to make sure that we include. And then the idea being that this will be on the agenda for our next meeting to actually have that full discussion. Everybody, everybody good with that? Okay, great. And you can be thinking about it in the meantime. And I think also, Dr. Morris, if you would include in our backup a copy of our school board goals so that people can kind of refresh their memory in terms of what we said we wanted to do. So, very good. School board committee updates. Do we have any committee updates tonight? Heather?
Sustainability is meeting Monday, the 22nd at 4:30.
Other committee updates, Dan?
Yep, policy meets tomorrow at 2:30.
Anybody else? Gianna?
The Wellness Committee, I apologize, obviously I have a cold. The Wellness Committee met on the 9th. We had some folks from Dover Mental Health Alliance discussing kind of community, community action regarding mental wellness. The big takeaway from that one is that schools don't have a huge amount of capacity within what people already have to do to make sure there's a community-wide mental health support system. And so that's why the Dover Mental Health Alliance was created. And I know that this was me talking with Suzanne a little bit too, where we thought that maybe we could have something similar here in order to get the community involved. Part of that is that that way they have feedback and they have input, but also the fact that there simply needs to be a bigger capacity in order to accomplish the things we want to do because teachers and counselors are already pretty loaded. And so it was an interesting kind of model that had some quirks with it that I think would definitely need to go under discussion, but I think it was a good start because I think it's something that's important. I'd like to actually have a mental health community group where we do have inputs from parents and guardians and students in order to communicate better about what's happening at the school level and also how it could be supported from the community. Because mental health is tied up with everybody. It's not, we're not in our own little microcosm, it's all related to each other. So that was informative.
I actually attend the monthly Dover Mental Health Alliance meetings and they are awesome. My big concern is that a lot of the people that attend are not strictly Dover, you know, some folks are. Superintendent of Dover School Districts attend, there are some school people. But there's also a lot of people representing different agencies that are more regional agencies. And obviously, you can only attend so many meetings a month. So I fully support it, it's been great. And I would love to see something like that happen in Oyster River. We just kind of need to be, I think, a little bit creative in terms of what that looks like. But it is very informative. Every month, there's a different presenter and, you know, different focus. And sometimes we break into small groups and have discussions. So it's definitely, I try never to miss it, it's very worthwhile.
Right, that's a very good point because one of the questions I actually had was, you know, who actually started the group making the process go forward? And a lot of times, it did end up being actually a counselor with a superintendent. One of the things I think that could be useful, even though it means you've got all these different people around, is that being able to expand the community to make it so we are having alliances with other districts actually could be helpful, even though you're making all those moving parts. But then you have that bigger community and also you're able to pool resources. Because one thing that was very clear is that these folks are operating on an absolute shoestring budget. And of course, that's something of concern. And so that way, you're able to utilize resources as efficiently as possible. But I'm really glad, I did, I recall that you did have experience with them. So it's definitely something that I think that we could continue to discuss and see if we come up with an actionable plan.
Other committees? Yes, Tom?
The Sabbatical Committee met today. We're in the process of selecting Sabbatical proposals. One of the interesting questions that's come up is whether the Sabbatical program as it's structured is more a better fit for, say, middle school or high school than it is for elementary school, where you're not thinking in terms of semesters or, you know, half years. And where you might need to think more creatively about how it would fit for an elementary school teacher to take a Sabbatical. So that's, I think, an interesting question that might come up, you know, whether it's more valuable in the summer or whether, you know, a different time structure might work better. So I just raise that because as people described it, you could say, yeah, it does really seem to fit more like a university, a high school, you know, as opposed to an elementary school.
Thank you. And thank you for all your work on the Sabbatical over the years and have had good ideas for sure. Any other committees? Okay. Any public comments? I do not see any members of the public. So closing actions, again, reminder that we have a joint meeting with Barrington on the 23rd, and that's at 6 o'clock in, at Barrington, the SAU office. And then we have our deliberative session, February 6th. So a couple of big things coming up. And after this meeting, we will have a non-public. So actually, we will go into, unless anybody has anything else, I'll ask for a motion to go into non-public. Okay, seeing nothing? I'll say that I will actually make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91-A colon 3, Roman numeral 2C for the Superintendent Evaluation. Can I have a second? Matt? This requires roll call vote. Gianna?
Gianna Jelcy, yes.
Heather Smith, yes.
Matthew Bacon, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Okay, we will go into non-public. Thank you, everybody.